I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first order of business is our recognition, our student recognition.
Good evening, everyone. I think that I'm going to get started with the recognition. The following high school students are recognized as 2021 National Merit Program commended scholars for the exceptional academic promise demonstrated by their outstanding performance on the qualifying test used for program entry. David Bedetti, James Burns, and Andrea Lopez. Congratulations.
The following High School North and High School South students have achieved recognition on one or more advanced placement exams. The Advanced Placement Program offers college-level curricula and examinations to high school students whereby colleges and universities may grant placement and course credit to students who obtain high scores on the examinations. We congratulate our students for their successful efforts to prepare for their college academic goals and earning recognition as AP Scholars with honor and distinction. Faith Ahern, Christian Amicongelo, Marco Astorino, Gabriela August, Leila A, Tricia Belus, Tabitha Brandt, Jessica Buscello, Leila Burke, James Burns, Sarah Cassidy, Bankata Shamil Amalasetti, Maggie Chesek, Stephen Sutronglo, Naomi Corboy, Katie Craig, Matthew Kunervoff, Emma Danza, Gavin Dafina, Cassandra DeGeorge, Rachel Dolman, Chris Gamar della, Kyle Gardina, Kimberly Goldman, Ty Hashemi, Brian Huerta, Joseph Kang, Ethan Kassaba, Nicole Kelly, Olivia Kelty.
Caitlin Knard, Kira Colleen, Darren Casey, Caroline Colk, David Cradman, Matthew Laporta, Sean Liner, Andrea Lopez, Maya Mann, Paige McGrath, Scott Melsky, Colin Muley, Michael Murphy, Connor North, Ryan O'Boyle, Emily O'Keefe, Cree Osner, Nicholas Piscopo, Jorge Rivera, Lauren Rizzo, Savannah Scalise, Patrick Sealy, Lauren Stone, Eddie Strom, Gordon Toth, Michael Tsai, Elizabeth Welch, Nicole Wolf, and Maya Yesalonis. Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations.
That concludes our commendations.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to proceed to our staff recognition at this time. The Board of Education congratulates and recognizes our administrators and educators who recently earned their doctoral degrees. Those include Supervisor of Social Studies and Technology Dr. Wendy Morales, High School North Assistant Principals Dr. James Falco and Dr. Chris Regino, Bay Shore Middle School Educational Technology Specialist Dr. Christina Requop, and Leonardo Elementary School Special Education Teacher Dr. Kristen Mayer. All completed the EDD program in educational leadership at Monmouth University. Thompson Middle School Assistant Principal Dr. Lindsay Fox earned her Doctorate of Education in Sport and Athletic Management from North Central University. We commend all of them for their perseverance and dedication which have culminated in reaching this tremendous milestone. Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to move on to our student speakers from High School South, Kayla Frybot.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kayla Frybot. I'm a senior at Middletown High School South. On behalf of the students, staff, and administration, we are all thrilled to be back in school at Middletown High School South. Although things definitely look a little different this year, the entire school community is making the best out of this unique situation. We would like to thank everyone for all that they have done so far during the 2020-2021 school year. So first off with academics, South is proud to have three National Merit commended scholars: James Burns, David Bedetti, and Andrea Lopez, who all scored in the top 10, 50,000 scores nationwide on their PSAT from last year. So congratulations to them. On Saturday, October 17th, the High School South Music Department held outdoor performances for both the choir and concert band ensembles. Families were invited to see their students perform in the stadium. At 11:00 AM, the choir presented an open rehearsal, and at 3:00 PM, the band put on a fall showcase. Both of these events allowed families to see the students' progress and gave students an opportunity to perform together for the first time since last December. The student council and executive board met with Middletown South administrators to discuss ways that we can facilitate some of our traditional activities in a healthy and safe way. Our fall athletic season is very well underway, and all of our teams are off to a really great start, which is definitely great to see. We are looking forward to the North-South football game this Friday night, and this week we're celebrating a spirit week to help build excitement for the game. All of Middletown South's clubs and extracurricular groups have begun to meet, and we're all coming up with fun and creative ways to facilitate our activities as best as we can. Middletown South will host its first NCAA signing of the year before winter break to allow those student athletes to further their D1 academic and athletic careers. And lastly, obviously, we know that SAT and subject tests have been very up in the air. So luckily, SAT testing took place at High School South on September 26 and October 3, and will be held again on December 5 and also in the spring. And ACT testing took place on October 24, so we're glad to see that that's able to happen. So thank you guys again. That's the current state of Middletown High School South right now as we're doing our best to keep spirits high during a shrine time. Thank you to everyone who has helped ease this process thus far. We're looking forward to a positive and great year for our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kayla. And next, from High School North, Sophia Haber-Brock.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sophia Haber-Brock, and I'm a junior from High School North. Here are the highlights of the school year so far. Eager to plan and prepare for the year ahead, co-curricular clubs at High School North have met a total of 111 times in the first 28 days of October. To highlight a few of these meetings, the Diversity Club has met several times to gather input from various stakeholders to create a high school climate survey on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and discuss ideas to unite and promote cultural awareness within the High School North community. The Middletown High School North Tech and Esports Club has met both privately and with the Makerspace Club to discuss team formation, the designs of team jerseys, a marketing and branding plan, and competition space, physical and virtual. The Arts Academy kicked off the school year with introductions, a discussion of potential virtual guest speakers, possible t-shirt ideas, and a message from District Director Mr. Graziano. The STEM Pathway Club has held their first career spotlight presentation highlighting the roles and responsibilities of a control system engineer. The High School North Drama Club held an initial meeting to introduce new members, discuss show updates, and to brainstorm fundraising ideas. They have started rehearsing for the fall virtual play The Matchmaker by Thornton Wilder via Google Meet. The High School North Dance Team has met several times to begin dance training and choreography via Google Meet and plan for the pre-game recognition of senior dance team members. The Lions Roar, our high school newspaper, has met multiple times to discuss story prep and upload several articles, topics of which have included fall athletic highlights, information on the upcoming presidential election, and recognition of the district website by the NJSPRA. Polaris, the High School North Gear Book Club, has met on a weekly basis to discuss fall updates and begin the process of organizing content. The High School North Green Team was awarded the Bronze Certification for the second time this afternoon, October 28, at a virtual ceremony sponsored by Sustainability Jersey for Schools. The Green Team staff and students have been completing additional projects for the Greenhouse and Outdoor Learning Center, as well as a landscaping work at the front entrance of the school. Ms. Jennifer Smith and her civic leadership students have several initiatives planned for October, including a Pinkout and a Staff-Student Spotlight. They're also planning a Battle of the Classes. For a TV film program, we have our North News program that is posted on our website every month, which I host. Recently, I had the chance to interview filmmaker Kevin Smith, actor filmmaker Ernie O'Donnell, and Ming Chen from the show The Comic Book Men on AMC. Multiple students filmed, qualified into the Dances with Films Festival, an Academy Award qualifying film festival in Los Angeles, California, as well as numerous other festivals around the country and even worldwide. This past month, Connor Kench ran the eighth fastest time in school history for Homedale Park, running 1649 in a dual meet versus Manow's Ben. Connor has raced in four races so far this season and placed first in all four races. Applications were submitted for seniors for National Honor Society, and the juniors took the PSAT in October. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Okay, let's move on to our committee reports, starting with technology with Dave Souyak.
Good evening. Tonight, I want to update the board, provide a board an update with the recent wireless network connectivity issue we experienced last week. Beginning October 15th, we experienced a number of days where a wireless network interruption started in the morning about 9:00 AM each day. The interruption was caused a dis- to lose wireless connectivity from anywhere from 20 minutes to 40 minutes to an hour per day. Wire connectivity was unaffected. As soon as initial failure was observed, we invoked support from our wireless-wired vendor, as well as from the manufacturer. And each subsequent day, hardware and software configuration changes were made in an attempt to isolate and resolve the problem. Our tech department, along with the vendor and manufacturer support engineers, held active online sessions each day, starting prior to students arriving at school and monitored the network throughout the day for any abnormalities. What made troubleshooting very difficult in this situation was that we were unable to replicate the issue. The issue would only occur naturally at 9:00 AM each day when our network could sustain its greatest client load. It would then self-correct within 20, 40 minutes like it should. So we would only have about 20 to 40 minutes each day to generate active logs and to investigate when it was actively troubleshooting. By the second day of trouble, we had the case escalated with both our vendor and the manufacturer. On each day, monitoring and troubleshooting session, there was at least 13 members of support online trying to resolve the issue. That included three people from our team, four people from our vendor, including the Vice President of Operations, and three senior-level engineers from the manufacturer. While we continued troubleshooting each day, in the event it was going to be a hardware failure, we insisted that the manufacturer RMOS new controller, which they did, it arrived on set on Monday, and we had it configured. In the event, we'd have to drop it in and replace the existing controller. On Tuesday, it was our support teams were working together to inspect configuration of log files, and irregularity was found. The anomaly led us to determine that the root cause of the failure was a Google Chrome OS 85 update. It was a bug. The Chromium bug, which is found in Google Chrome OS 85, was sending out spoofed MAC addresses and public IP addresses to our controller, basically performing a DDoS attack internally on our equipment from our own Chromebooks. This was called CPU to overload, and then shut down each morning at the same time at 9:00 AM when we had our heaviest load on our network. To resolve this, we added a filter in the system that basically drops these erroneous packets before it accesses our network and moving forward. We contacted Google, and they are aware of the bug, but at the current time, they do not have a patch for it. They are saying it's in development mode. Luckily, our wireless network has a firewall built into the controller that allows us to put this rule in, basically dropping these erroneous packets right at the door, and they never accessed the system. So while this bug is still active, it does not interfere with any equipment or services moving forward. Once we confirmed the issue was resolved over a course of a few days and connectivity was consistent, we began to restore all the equipment, hardware, and services that we removed during the course of troubleshooting. We completed that process up over the weekend and have been monitoring the network since. I have seen no anomalies, and everything seems like it's working properly. Just want to add, what makes this a unique situation is we were... The bug is on Google Chrome OS 85, which is the latest and greatest Google OS version. Under all circumstances, or most circumstances, we never run the latest version. We're usually one or two versions behind to avoid something like this. In this case, a few weeks ago, we had some difficulties, some students being dropped from the Google Meets. We contacted Google Support, and they recommended that we went to 85. And therefore, as soon as we did, we introduced the bug to our system and had the problems we did. Any questions?
Hey, Dave, it's Nick. I have a question about the fact that this is on our students' machines. You said that it would cause the CPUs to fire up. Is that still happening? So are the kids' machines still firing up? Are we seeing performance issues? Does the students try and do their work?
The bug does not affect the CPU utilization on the Chromebook side. It would affect it on the controller side. So each Chromebook, for instance, would send, for example, one or two packets out, which is not going to take the CPU down on the Chromebook side. But if you multiply that by 4,800 Chromebooks that are on our network around 9:00 AM, that's a large load to be sending to the controller.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dave. We're ready to move on to Student Services with Michelle Tiedemann.
Hi, everyone. So you'll see on the agenda our information items. We had a committee meeting on October 21st, and we had a meeting with the Middletown Township Friends of Diverse Learners on October 12th. So going in date order, when the administration met with the representatives from the Friends of Diverse Learners. We went over the inclusion grant update. We did an update of the NJIETA grant that we have for Harmony Pre-K and Leonardo K5. We're well underway, having regular meetings with the representatives from New Jersey Coalition for Inclusive Ed and Montclair University. We have a team of staff in each building for Harmony, it's Pre-K, for Leonardo, K5, and we are in the planning phase of the three-to-five-year systemic change for inclusion. We also discussed at that meeting on October 12th dyslexia. We addressed concerns about how the district screens for dyslexia, the two-hour PD that is required and provided to staff, and also where interventions are in each of the schedules, particularly in the elementary school. The attempts at doing it during the win period, which doesn't always work out depending on the school, but we did review all of that. We talked about the Phase Four, which has our resource students having returned to school five days a week, and the social-emotional support that is provided at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Then our Board of Ed Committee meeting was on October 21st. We did discuss many of the things that I just went over because we did a review of the October 12th meeting with the Friends of Diverse Learners. We also, at the committee meeting, went over the Phase Four reopening of the schools, the return of our resource students five days a week, how we are addressing related services, where we need to fill in some gaps there. And we also went over, of course, the inclusion grant and the disproportionality. I have talked about that at prior meetings, that the district was cited for over-representation of Black students with IEPs having received out-of-school suspensions in the year 2016, 17, 17, 18, and 18, 19. We are required to use 15% of our IDEA grant money, which for our district is $433,741, to address the disproportionality. So we have a number of things that we are planning, with the biggest being the Equity-Inclusion Specialist who will work with. We're also moving in a direction of looking at some professional consultants who can work with our Equity-Inclusion Specialist to make sure that we address the disproportionality.
Dr. Tiedemann, if you don't mind, I'd jump in real quick. Just to Dr. Tiedemann's point, the job description for that Equity-Inclusion Specialist is on this evening's agenda. And if you take a look at that, you can see that that person is really going to be looking at how we can reveal and start to implement some social justice and diversity in all aspects of our curriculum and operations and school culture and climate. And they're also working, they'll be working with our Diversity and Equity Committee, which is a district-wide committee that we've developed to take a look at exactly what's taking place in our buildings as well. So this person's going to have a very important job. And another piece of their position is also going to be providing professional development for our staff in the areas of social justice and equity and diversity, and working with our administrators when it comes to discipline. Because again, as Dr. Tiedemann had initially said, that this is tied back to disproportionality of special-ed Black students suspension. So they will be working with our administrators as far as discipline is concerned as well. So, thank you, Dr. Tiedemann.
Sure. And the 15% of the IDEA funds allocated for the disproportionality will have no negative impact whatsoever on any of our special education programs. We do have some voting item agendas. We have some students receiving home instruction, a number of out-of-district placements, contracted services, and one addendum to a settlement agreement. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Tiedemann. Moving on to Facilities and Finance with Mrs. Doherty.
Thank you. The Facilities and Finance Committee meeting met on October 26th, this past Monday evening. We went over a variety of topics. Just to touch on those topics, we talked about a couple of things in the areas of facilities, one of them being the High School North track. The fact that the track was put in about four years ago. There are some issues that we are looking to, that we were looking to get addressed, and that the installer came in, the manufacturer came in, and did a very intensive cleaning on the track to restore some of the original color and to clean up some of the rubber and so forth that we felt was loose. But there's a few other items that we still need them to address, and we're following up with them to do some additional repairs while the track is still under the five-year warranty period. So that's ongoing. We also talked about the Nut Swamp Field project. The field over at Nut Swamp that the township has incorporated into their Normandy Park project is pretty much completed, the portion that's on Nut Swamp property. There is some remaining work regarding the grading of some of the soil that was moved during that process that is being used to level out some areas more toward the back of Nut Swamp's property. But they're working on getting that graded and smoothed out, so that's in progress. We also talked about a couple of the items that are on the agenda for this evening. The Comprehensive Maintenance Plan update that we do annually, and the Form M1, which talks about the maintenance budget and comparing it to our allowable maintenance reserve and so forth. So we have those, we reviewed those with the committee, and we have those on the agenda this evening. You know, we have updated the maintenance plan to include the items that we also included in our Restart Recovery Plan regarding cleaning and maintenance on equipment and systems and so forth. We also talked about some of the Restart Recovery Plan or Reentry Plan items as it relates to facilities and supplies. And we talked about deploying some additional desks in some of the schools. We talked about making sure, and inform the committee, that we were stocked with all of the PPE and cleaning supplies that we need at this time. We did talk about ordering more desk shields to prepare for more students coming back into the building. So we are in the process of ordering more shields for individual desks and also ordering shields that could be placed on tables at the elementary level. So that's in progress. We also talked about the area of, or the idea of elementary snacks, and that each elementary building is working on a plan for eating snacks inside when the weather precludes them from going outside, whether there be rain or snow or extreme temperatures. Each building is going to work on a plan that works for their building. We also talked about upcoming, for the upcoming budget, and over the next several months, looking at capital projects that we would like to incorporate in the 21-22 budget, and also the...
Sorry, Amy. Amy?
Yes.
Real quick. In terms of what the jury... Did I miss that? We talked about that as well, in terms of some of the changes that we had to make there because of not being able to find people.
Well, we did, right, we did talk about how we were addressing the duties that were originally going to be insigned to the environmental workers. And we had started out the year extending the hours of our custodial staff to cover more during the day with the additional disinfecting and cleaning. As we've been operating now for the past several weeks, and we've been able to incorporate those into the staff that's in the buildings, the custodial staff that's in the buildings during the day. So we're still doing a mix between the staff that's there and shifting and extending some of the hours for custodians to make up for that work. So as we've been open for several weeks, we've been able to hone what needs to be done and get what needs to be done incorporated into everybody's schedules.
And one other thing, in terms of, I guess, Ms. Roscoe will touch on, maybe she won't, I'm not sure, but in terms of desk shields, what we're doing with that. I know that's something as, I think, more, more students are in the school, starting using those a little bit more. I don't know if...
Yeah, I did.
Or...
No, I actually, Mr. Little, I did actually just go over that. I said we're in the front.
No, I know you did, but in terms of, I think that's, we're not currently doing that, right? Like, in the schools? Or do any of the classrooms have desk shields?
We're using them on a limited basis where it's needed. If teachers and students are in close proximity doing certain types of work, we haven't deployed them across the district at this point.
So we anticipate further use across the district, is that...
Right, that was...
Talking about the budget, okay. That's because it's a new... I know, it was at the meeting. I just want to sort of highlight that.
No, I know, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I thought I hadn't kind of...
No, you did. I'm just saying, I don't know if the clarity is that we'll be using more of those. We were talking about it from a budget perspective and availability perspective. But I think that's also part of, I guess, in terms of we move through the phases of the plan as more kids come into the classroom. So maybe that's something Ms. Roscoe, I think she's talking about the plan today. If you can touch on a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you. Didn't mean to interrupt. Thank you.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I'm sorry. I thought I had gone over there. So anyway, as far as the capital projects go, we had talked about the fact that we do have some funds remaining from our ESIP project that we have recently completed, and also some remaining referendum funds from work that we had done over the past several years on a variety of projects. And we talked about the fact that we, there is some, there's always continuing work to do on our HVAC system. So we're looking at, we're working with our architect right now to scope out with the remaining funds that we have, possibly addressing even more of the rooftop units. We've done a lot of rooftop unit work over the past several years at the secondary schools, but to go back and pick up some of the ones that we weren't able to get to, particularly at High School South and Bay Shore. So we are actually meeting with the architect, I believe, on Friday, to start talking about that in earnest. So that's something that we would like to move forward. You know, we have about $800,000 that we can use toward that, toward those projects. So we're not sure how far that will get us, but we're going to get as far as we can with it, and we're going to pick up some more of those units that we have not been able to replace. And we also talked about, I'm sorry...
And I'm sorry, that's also, we have to use that money for secondary schools, right?
Right.
Because that's where, so based on, if you've explained... Because that's where, so based on, if you explain that a little bit, that, you know, we can't use it for the elementary schools.
It has to be related to what the original projects were, which were at the secondary school.
So that's, that's ESIP and the referendum.
Correct.
Right? In other words, they require the use for specifically secondary schools.
Correct. So for the 2122 budget planning, we have talked about things that we would like to look at incorporating into the budget and we know that priority items, you know, mainly focusing in the area of health and safety would be the elementary HVAC units, fire alarm systems, flooring replacements, doors replacements and things of that nature. So we are just in the beginning stages of pulling things out of our long-range facilities plan that we'd like to try to address in the 2122 budget between using whatever the available capital reserves are and also trying to build some funds into our operating budget to, to address these projects. So we will have a more detailed discussion at the November meeting and in the upcoming months as we develop our next year's budget. Then we then talked to the Finance Committee or the, or the Facilities and Finance Committee about, just to recap some of the recent grants, you know, that we've been dealing with in the facilities area. We, there's been a lot of discussion about these, Alyssa's Law securing our children's security, future security funding. The application was originally supposed to be due back in the spring and that was pushed off. But the application is now due November 20th. Just to remind everybody, Middletown's allocation was $538,389. So we will be submitting projects that would include a significant expansion of our security camera network that would touch on all buildings and the high school fields. Safety film for windows and doors. And work on our intercom and PA systems throughout the district. So we would be submitting those expenses and they have to be eligible expenses. There's only certain expenses that are eligible. These are eligible projects for that grant. We also are gathering information to submit for, there is a water infrastructure grant that's now available. The application for that is also due November 20th. The allocation amount for Middletown is not determined. The way this grant will work is you can submit for projects, anything done on or after January 1st, 2016 is eligible for reimbursement if it's an eligible expense. So we are working on pulling things together that we've done. We've done a decent amount of work on replacing water fountains with bottle filling stations. We, and along those lines go filters. We've done some water main replacement work and other things that would qualify for these funds. So, you know, we will submit as much as we have done and we'll see what we get back. If the amount of projects submitted by district succeeds the available funds that the states have, then the awards are made, you know, on a subjective basis. You know, they'll take a look at the merits of the projects and they'll allocate funds to the districts accordingly. So we're working on that. Other funding updates, we just wanted to go over that, you know, we had, we did receive our extraordinary aid allocation back in July. That was for the 1920 school year. It always lags after the end of the year. And our original allocation was little less than what we had budgeted. It was a million four and change. And we had budgeted about, we had budgeted a million five for last year. However, we did just recently receive an increase in that allocation. Again, still it's for 1920 of $146,000. So that brought our total extraordinary aid to $1,613,000 for last year. Since the increase we received was after we had closed out our last fiscal year, we will be reflecting this $146,000 increase in our current fiscal year, even though it was tied to last year. And that's, that's what the state has directed. We also have coronavirus relief funds available for 2021. Middletown's allocation is $375,291. These funds are recorded outside of our operating budget. They're treated as a, basically where we record our grants. And it must be spent by December 31st, 2020. So we discussed the possibility of using these funds to pay for the additional desk and table shields that we've been talking about and purchasing those for our classrooms. If we don't expend all of the money using that, we have a lot of other eligible expenses that we can apply to it to meet the allocation amount by December 31st. But we, we anticipate that most of that money will be spent on the shields because those, it will be a good amount of money. Then we also have, we've discussed before our CARES Act allocation, which is $346,000. Those funds need to be spent by next September 30th, this, September 30th, actually 2020, 2022. So the budget application has been submitted and approved and we've already been moving forward with that. One of the other things we talked about was
Before we move on, Amy, I think that one of the things, you know, we talked about, you know, the aid that we're getting is, you know, it's nice to have some aid, but it's probably going to be far short of some of the additional expenditures that we're probably running into during the pandemic here, right, with accommodations and things like that. Something I think that, what we talked about is as we get further into the year, sort of having an idea where we are, you know, what our run rate is in terms of where we are normally versus where we are now with the pandemic, because you know that there are costs to what's going on. And it's just a heads up to folks that, you know, that CARES Act and the coronavirus does not cover, you know, we're not quite sure, but it certainly doesn't, certainly doesn't cover all of the additional expenses that we've, that we're going to incur. So as we get further in the year, I think we talked about seeing when we're getting to like flashing yellow, if you want to use colors, green, yellow, red, when we're getting closer to exceeding our budget, because a lot of this is hard to really gauge and to estimate, considering this is a sort of a new environment and we, month to month, things change. Just wanted to point that out for folks.
Yeah, we did talk about that. I mean, you know, even though it's the end of October, we've really only been up and operating for, you know, about a month and a half so far this year. So we're hoping, you know, the next couple of months will really show us more how we're trending as far as personnel costs and other things to give us an idea of what adjustments we may need to make, you know, through June 30th and also, we're hoping we'll have some indication of how we, you know, what the environment will be to start building next year's budget as well. So the other, another topic we talked about was the implementation of the New Jersey Educators Health Plan. This is something that most of you have probably heard about just by reading the paper and so forth, but it's a plan that has been developed and is being pushed out for a January 1st, 2021 implementation date. And the, it requires that all new employees that we hire after July 1st, 2020 must be put in this plan effective January 1st. So even though we've had employees start after, you know, after July 1st and they've started with other insurance, we'll have to transfer them over to the new plan. Our current employees can elect this plan for January 1st if they choose during a special open enrollment period that we're going to be holding starting next week. So we, we had some discussion and we've been looking at it. We just, we did get our rates pretty late in the game. You know, we only got the rates for this plan at the end of last week and we've been working very hard to get them from Horizon, but there was a big backlog in getting those rates. So we do have those now and we're working on, you know, putting it out for all the employees. But just to recap what we talked about, the cost of this plan, the premiums for this plan are basically more expensive than pretty much all the plans that we currently offer outside of our PPO, which is offered on a limited basis. So in, in most cases, if employees elect this plan, you know, the premiums are going to be higher for this plan. And on top of that, the contribution levels are different as well. It's not, you know, under Chapter 78, there was a set of contribution levels based upon the cost of the premium and a percentage that went up as the salaries go up. With this, under Chapter 44, which this plan falls under, the tables are different. It's a percentage of salary, you know, and that goes up as well as the salaries go up. But in most cases, employees will end up paying less, you know, for this plan, which is good for the employees. However, you know, we have to determine, you know, what the impact is going to be on the district if we have a large amount of our employees migrate over to this plan. We don't really have, we, we don't, we don't really know, you know, what, what the, what our staff is going to do. We know who has to go into the plan. But, you know, until after we do the open enrollment, over the next couple of weeks, we won't really know who intends to move to this plan. There's some pros and cons as far as the plan design. They also will have the chance to enroll in it July 1st. So, you know, we may see some people not enroll at this time and decide to wait, but we really, you know, like I said, we don't really know. So we're trying to, and we're going to have to calculate after we do the open enrollment, what the impact on us is going to be. But you know, I think the intention of the legislation was for employees to save and for districts to save, but there's been a lot of discussion not just for us, but in a lot of districts across the state, that the premium cost is actually going to end up being higher for a lot of districts. And you know, as far as whether it's a substantial impact or not, you know, that you won't know until you actually see who signs up and, and how things shake out. But it's, you know, the initial analysis by a lot of districts is it's not going to necessarily be a saver and it could make, maybe cost districts some money. So that's what we're looking at right now. Another
I think that's, I think that's a great point, Amy, is that, that's, that's a big deal, right? We spend a lot of time on the benefits plans and part of that is the dental, if, if, if they use that plan. I think the indications are the employees don't have to pay things for the dental coverage. Is that, is that correct? So that's an additional cost. And this is basically a Horizon Blue Cross game, right? They're, they're the ones the state has running it. So, you know, it's, you're playing against, again, it was always about Blue Cross running the table, right? So this could be something in our budget that could be a big impact. I mean, every year we talk about it. So this is definitely, I guess, put on a, a yellow flag, if not, something that's going to be potentially a big impact for us.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely have to, have to see. And then there'll be another new plan. The Garden State Health Plan, which will, is being developed and that will be available July 1st. So that plan is entirely voluntary. Nobody will be forced to go into that plan. But it will, if, if somebody does elect that plan, they will see a premium sharing reduction of up to 50% from what they would pay under the New Jersey Educators Health Plan. So again, we have no information on the rates for that plan or anything else, but I, the only thing I really do know is that the network will be, from what I understand, entirely a New Jersey network of providers. So you know, there, it is, it's going to be a lot more limited plan. So I don't know how mu, again, how many employees would opt for that. But you know, on top of the New Jersey Educators Health Plan, this other plan is going to be coming along as well. So we did, we did spend a lot of time talking about that. We're going to have to see over the next month or so, you know, what the impact is going to be for January 1st and, you know, keep that in mind as we go into our budget for next year. We also talked about our end-of-year results for 1920. We're still in the process of finalizing our audit. But however, you know, we, it does look like we will be able to make the, the board-approved capital reserve deposits that we had anticipated in June. So we should be, we will be able to deposit another million five into our capital reserve, which we can then purpose into next year's budget into some of these projects we were talking about. And also add to our maintenance reserve $500,000. Now, just to remind the board, we did take $250,000 out of our maintenance reserve to balance our budget for this year. So we'll be able to replenish that and add a little bit more to that. And then additionally, we will have some excess surplus to apply to the 2122 budget as revenue about $955,000, which again, we discussed is a good thing. We have eliminated the use of surplus in our budgets up until this point, the last several years, we haven't had that. You know, we haven't, but this year we did realize some because we did have some savings that had occurred based upon, you know, the fact that we were not operating in person from March, middle of March till the end of June. So we had savings in various areas. So we were able to, to keep that and have it now to apply toward our 2122 budget. And again, just a reminder that we are anticipating that our state aid reduction for next year is, you know, likely to be in the neighborhood of about a million dollars. So you know, at least we'll have something to help start offsetting that, hopefully in next year's budget, you know, as we build that. So that's, that's really all we talked about, which was quite a bit, but it was, it was a very productive meeting. Aside from that, we have a few things on the agenda. In addition to the Maintenance Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and the M1 and so forth, we have our financial reports for the month. We have some non-public entitlements for security and I believe it was nursing. And we also have the Alliance for Competitive Telecommunications with ESCNJ Cooperative Agreement that we use to purchase our, you know, our internet services and so forth through a cooperative. And we have a couple of transportation jointures for students who are the responsibility of other districts, but they're sent, you know, they're attending our schools. And we are providing transportation and doing a jointure with them so they can pay us for that. And that covers Facilities and Finance.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I apologize. Amy, I have a quick question, just to follow up from a topic from a previous meeting. The bond refinancing and the questions we had had about a delay in the filing of that, has that, have, have we seen any resolution on that?
Any further movement on that? So, you know, right now, we're just status quo.
Okay, moving on to policy. Amy, I don't know if you want to take that. I, I would like to try to get another policy meeting on the calendar if we could. I just want to throw that out there. What do you think, Mr. Donovan? Yeah? Okay, go ahead, Amy.
We just have a policy that we have on for a second reading tonight that we reviewed last month regarding the administration of medication. So again, it's just a second reading on that policy. It's actually, I think it was just a regulation, right, Mrs. Walker? Okay, it's just a regulation.
Okay, great. Moving on to Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Picas.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a busy month in curriculum. Very excited to have the students back and see the curriculum in action. In alignment with the district's commitment to fostering inclusion and equity, a committee comprised of administrators, teachers and students have been meeting virtually over the last several weeks. Today was our third meeting in the matter of about four weeks to discuss ideas related to maintaining and enhancing our classroom environments in order to promote engagement, safety and positivity for all students. Teachers and students shared their perspectives and experiences with district and building-level administrators. And the group determined the first initiative of the committee is to develop a classroom mission statement that builds upon our district's mission to empower students by upholding the values of inclusivity, engagement and safety in our educational environments. Members of the high school, each of the high schools' respective diversity clubs, these students will spearhead this effort, which includes seeking feedback from the student bodies via a student survey. Dr. Morales, Supervisor of Social Studies and Technology, shared the progress that the district has made so far in the areas of equity, inclusion and, and diversity since the summer. Some of these initiatives include introducing new curriculum that focuses on global and/or cultural competencies, updating curriculum to incorporate more diverse perspectives and planning professional development for educators. In addition, the district is creating a new Equity and Inclusion Specialist position. Mr. Renella and Dr. Tiedemann spoke about that earlier. And I just want to say, on behalf of the Curriculum Department, we're really looking forward to this new partnership and the opportunity to grow with one of our colleagues who is being recommended tonight in expanding our programs, offerings, ensuring that they're inclusive to all students and improving upon our instructional practices as well. As many of the members of the community know, it was in our newsletter on Friday and principals have been, elementary principals have been sharing, our students have done an outstanding job acclimating to the health and safety measures included in our district's reentry plan, including building their tolerance and stamina for mask wearing or face coverings. Therefore, students will begin to participate, or they began this week actually, in live special area classes during previously scheduled wellness breaks. Teachers will continue to bring students outside to the greatest extent possible and have them maintain social distance so that students can remove their masks and get a break from those face coverings. However, the primary use of this time will be for instruction in special area classes. As it's been mentioned, a separate recess or snack period will continue to be scheduled for all students. Lessons done during in-person specials in the elementary level will complement what is posted by teachers on the PE and Health, the art, music and Spanish teachers' Google classrooms each week. will complement what is posted by teachers on the PE and Health, the Art, Music, and Spanish teachers' Google classrooms each week. Students who attend school on campus will be scheduled for in-person instruction for physical education and health and either art or music until we, until we return from winter recess. Asynchronous elementary Spanish lessons will primarily be the, will be the primary source of instruction for all students, as has been the routine since the start of the school year. And we do anticipate that full virtual students will continue to complete their asynchronous special area lessons for all their classes as posted on their teachers' Google classrooms. The current plan is to implement our regularly scheduled six-day rotating special area schedule after the winter recess. That will mean that between January and June, all students at the elementary level will participate over two semesters. They'll be reduced semesters, but albeit equal, in Health, PE, Music, Art, Spanish, and Digital Literacy and Design classes. More details about our special area schedules will be communicated by the principals to their school communities as we get closer to Phase Six in December, hopefully, keeping our fingers crossed, and the winter recess period. So this current environment has led us to do some unique planning when it comes to some of our annual events that we host out of the Curriculum Department. One of, two of those things are our Academy and Pathway Fair for our eighth graders, as well as High School North and High School South's eighth-grade open house. So we're going to be combining the events this year, make a super event. The directors and supervisors are, have already begun to migrate our existing hard copy or PDF version of our middle school and high school course selection guides onto what will be a very new and interactive page on our district website. Our students and parents will be able to access all of this content via our, our district website. And they'll be able to read over it in preparing for signing up for next year's courses. In addition to the course information, there will be also updated information about all of our academies and pathways so that parents and students can, can better inform themselves on those offerings as well. We will update and post any relevant videos and information to a section of this new course selection website page. We hope to have include student testimonials, Twitter feeds from our teachers and our administrators who are involved in those pathways and those academies and those different course areas and departments. We're really hoping to make it an interactive and, and live experience for students so that it's, again, transitioning it from a PDF, the old hard copy paper coursebook, to a much more interactive design. At this time, I mentioned before, we're going to be combining our annual Academy and Pathway Fair with our High School North and High School South eighth-grade open house event. We're planning for that to be held on December 17th, so please mark your calendars. More information will be going out to our eighth grade families and students about this. We're going to be having our second planning meeting this Friday with the Curriculum Department Directors and Supervisors and the High School North and South Administration and Guidance Departments. Linkit. So this has been an ongoing prop, initiative, as many parents know, in the district since last spring. Many of our parents created accounts through the Student and Parent Portal in Linkit, beginning, I guess it was last February and March. A Linkit has since changed how they will present the data to our students and parents, and they have created a separate Student and Parent Portal, which is a welcome improvement. And I, I really give a lot of credit to Mrs. Arrozco and also Mrs. Alphon, who has since left the district, for spearheading and really taking this on. We were one of the largest districts that Linkit partners with to initiate access to the student data for our parents via this portal. And it's really been our feedback that has driven them to make these very welcomed upgrades. Students can now log in using their MTPS email addresses and access their testing portal with having, without having to enter an additional test code. Parents and guardians will be able to access testing data for all of their children currently enrolled in Middletown with one username and password, once the accounts are established. This will definitely streamline that process for our parents. Linkit will be emailing all of our parents' accounts in the, using the email addresses that they have in Power School with instructions for how to create these accounts and a unique registration code. Linkit Form C, of which would be a culmination of the previous year's content that students were introduced to in math and literacy, has been administered in grades three to eight for mathematics and in grades three to 11 for English Language Arts. Teachers have been using the results of these assessments to determine where students need additional small group instruction based on last year's standards. And the interventionists and coaches have been using this information as well to guide the intervention process. We will be administering Linkit Form A, which is content based on this current year's standards that students are being exposed to in the upcoming weeks as a benchmark test for teachers to see which grade levels, current grade level standards, students may already demonstrate mastery in. And that will really allow them to better differentiate their instruction and meet all of our students' needs, whether it's acceleration, intervention at, at the on-grade level area, or remediation. Beyond that, we will also administer Linkit Forms B and C this year to students in grades three to 11 at future points to track their students, our students' growth, and properly prepare them for this round, this year's, in, in regards to this year's standards that they are being instructed in. In spite of the current health pandemic, our Arts Department are doing a great job of keeping our arts alive here in Middletown. In spite of the fact that we're a little sidelined for some of our normal performance venues and means, our Drama Department in High School North and High School South worked with the Director of Arts and Business, Mr. Graziano, to submit a proposal for a fall virtual show in each school. High School North's production of The Matchmaker by Thornton Wilder will be streamed on December 4th and 5th at 7:00 PM. High School South students have created mini-productions of The Zoom Where It Happened and the Jesus Save Me Program and Dolly. And the intention is to release them via YouTube on November 20th, on or around November 20th. High School South provided, provided an outside rehearsal and two song performances for parents to attend in the stands at High School South. Students also held an outside, outside instrumental performance. Both of these took place on Saturday, October 17. High School North is also planning a virtual performance for both chorus and instrumental music to be released sometime in January. And as of now, a proposal for virtual chorus performances are currently in the works for Lincoln, Fairview, and Leonardo schools, and they're being reviewed with Mr. Graziano. And more will come regarding our other schools as well. Certainly a work in progress, but I really do want to applaud our teachers and our arts program, again, for keeping the arts alive and the students engaged and able to put on their performances for our community. There's just one last update I wanted to share with everyone. November 6th is the deadline for our high school students to register for AP tests. That's a very important date. We've been working very hard to get that information out to all of our students enrolled in our AP courses at both High School South and High School North. Another important footnote here, for this year only, College Board is waiving the cancellation fee. This is really important because even if a student is undecided at this time, whether or not they're going to take the test, it is to their advantage, if they can, to register and pay the, repay the normal fee. Because if they decide later on down the road that they want to cancel and they don't want to take the test, they can get a full refund. However, if they delay in registering for the test, there will be a $40 late fee that will be applied in addition to the normal cost of the test. And that will be applied after that November deadline. So we just want to really encourage all of our students in the AP program to take advantage of that. And, you know, that's a way for them to potentially earn additional college credit. I've also been talking to the Guidance Departments and the Curriculum Directors. And something that we see as a general positive for the district in our students taking advantage of earning advanced college credit is that at both high schools this year, we see a increase in the number of students who are participating in dual enrollment programs. And we've really done a lot of work to expand our dual enrollment offerings. We've been partnering with, with new colleges and universities like Kane to be able to expand upon those, those courses. And this year, we've had an increase at High School South of about, of about 121 students who are enrolled in at least one dual enrollment course. And at High School North, we're actually up about 174 students, participating and taking advantage of that opportunity, which is really a great thing. It's, it's an opportunity, again, to earn advanced college credit at a, at a marginal price, significantly less than what you would pay once you're on college campus. And we hope to, to be able to continue to expand upon those course offerings. We're being very aggressive and, and looking at new opportunities. And I think Mrs. Caruso is going to give us an update on our ESL program as well.
Good evening, everybody. There are currently 46 students this year participating in the district in our ELL program, taught by three and a half ELL teachers in our district. That number is approximately 64% of all the students who are eligible to participate in the program. The students whose parents or guardians declined to have their child participate, however, are placed in a class that is taught by a PSYOP-trained teacher in the district. PSYOP stands for Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol. It's a research-based instructional model that is highly effective in addressing the academic needs of English learners. And that protocol provides a framework for the teachers to design and deliver lessons that make the content more comprehensible for the ELL students. Actually, more comprehensible for all students has been our experience. In comparison to last year, there are approximately seven more students eligible for ELL this year than last year. And there are approximately three more students participating in the program this year than last year. Just as a reminder, due to the pandemic, the access testing that we gave to all the ELL students was begun last March but never completed when we went virtual. However, those students who were able to complete the testing prior to our going all virtual, out of those, we did have six students who were able to exit the program this past September. Okay, questions?
And we do have two voting agenda, items on the agenda tonight. We do have a staff member who we're enrolling in a course for professional development on the agenda. That's over $150, as well as our annual participation agreement with the Monmouth County Arts and Education Center for after-school activities for middle school and high school students, which is paid for by the families. Okay, if there's no questions, I know Mrs. Dell and I are working on, coming up with a new date, another date for an upcoming Curriculum Committee meeting, so we look forward to hosting that.
Great, thank you. Moving on to student activities with Mr. Ranella.
Yes, Mr. Razzo is going to give us a update on the reentry plan and phased-in approach.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Rotolo. If you could share that presentation that I sent with you so everyone could see it, thank you so much. All right, so just to give me a little bit of a backdrop while I'm talking, I think that we have had overall of, you know, a very positive experience coming back to schools this year, so much so that we were able to welcome more students back more of the time than we had originally anticipated. So in order to do that, I wanted to let you know a little bit about, you know, what the notifications that you're receiving are and how we're keeping track of all of, of any positive COVID-19 cases that we see in the district. So on the next slide, there is just a couple of basic definitions. And just so that you understand who we are contacting and when, anyone who's deemed to be a close contact to someone who tests positive with COVID-19 is contacted directly by one of our school nurses and/or one of the contact tracers from the Department of Health. But all of our school-related contacts, close contacts, are notified directly by one of our school nurses. And they are guided through a whole conversation about what they need to do, you know, why they were considered a close contact. But those close contacts and how many people are under quarantine are not disclosed to anyone else. And it's not a notification that we make publicly. Similarly, we don't notify when a person is under quarantine or in isolation. So people are under quarantine if they have been in close contact with someone who has been diagnosed with COVID-19. And someone in isolation has either been assumed to be positive for COVID-19 because they demonstrate a number of symptoms that have not been tested or because they come back with a positive test. And again, we've not been notifying for every case of quarantine or an isolation that is not accompanied by a positive result. What we have been notified, what we have been notifying the whole district community for is whenever we have a positive case. So we will continue to do that whenever there is a student or staff member. And I will say, we have even notified for, for people who are tangential to the district, but who do have an association with either our students or our staff members, we consult with the Middletown Department of Health each time we have a positive case reported in the district. And we consult with them to find out who we need to notify, if we needed to, if we need to notify. And I would say, before yesterday, I would say confidently that we have notified for more cases than we had to. About half of the cases that we've notified for, we actually didn't have to, based on exposure to the building. So the district has taken a stance of being very transparent with the COVID-19 exposure to the buildings and to our district's students and staff. So I say that we didn't have to notify because I think that our quarantining procedures and our close contact procedures are, are pretty conservative to the point where we have had people home on quarantine when they are then diagnosed with COVID-19. So they've never been in the building since being exposed to COVID-19, and therefore, there were no additional students or staff members who would have been exposed. Let's see what else that I want to tell you. We have currently, you know, we can look at the next one with a little bit of the graphic. We have had no evidence of any student-to-student transmission of COVID-19. We've had no evidence of student-to-teacher or teacher-to-student transmission of COVID-19 in our schools. So we believe that, again, all those procedures that we're following are working, you know, and that we are, that we're keeping everybody as healthy and as safe as we possibly can. We also, again, work with the, the Middletown Department of Health each time we have a case to figure out what we need to do. And this is one chart that the New Jersey Department of Health released and that we follow, that describes when we would close a classroom, when we would close a building, and when we need to, to do a little bit more of a deeper dig into where these cases are before we can figure out what to do with them. So I bring this up because I'm sure that many of you have seen the, the letters of notification that come, have come out over the last two days. Again, we look at each of those and we're monitoring the situation. And we will continue to do that so that we can make sure that we can bring more students back for Phases Five and Six. So again, we are using the data, but we're also consulting with the Middletown Department of Health each time so that we know where, you know, where exactly we stand with those statistics. So our next phases are, we are in now Phase Four. So we have introduced more students to the schools more of the time. Phase Five is anticipated to begin in the middle of November. So what we have done is we have sent out a survey to all of our, all remote learners and their families to see which of those students would like to come back to school, beginning on or around November 16th. And again, we will meet with the Department of Health to see if our statistics and data demonstrate that we have the ability to bring back more students. But we also want to see what that would look like. What is the effect going to be on our transportation? What's going to be the effect on our classrooms? And we are working with, you know, many stakeholders to try to figure out what's the best way to get as many students back in as quickly as possible. So there are a couple of different plans kind of floating around that we're trying to figure out how to do that in the best way. After Phase Five, we are looking forward to Phase Six, which I, you know, would love to see that December 14th start date occur. And again, we will keep consulting with the Department of Health, as well as, in that case, I believe that we're going to work with at least an epidemiologist and more than that, to determine when we can bring back all of our students who are ready to come back for five days of instruction per week. At that point, parents will still have the option to continue with reduced in-person instruction on the two days that they were assigned. But all of our students would be welcome. So with that said, as Mr. Little mentioned a little while ago, there is, there are some implications for bringing back more students. So we need to make sure that when we bring back more students, that we are ready to have students with less than six feet of social distance between them. So in each of these phases, we're looking at that PPE. We're looking at those desk dividers. We're looking at how can we reorient our classrooms to make sure that our students and our staff, again, say as safe as possible. So those are the things that our school-based pandemic response teams are looking at. And they are each tasked with coming up with ideas and plans for, again, how to keep those classrooms as, as, as safe as possible and how to keep students- for again, how to keep those classrooms as, as, as safe as possible and how to keep students as separated as possible. One of the other topics that has been in those phased plans, and I only chose the highlights from the website, so please go to the website to see more of those details. The in-person dining and in-person lunch has been a big question, so I just wanted to address the fact that lunches cannot continue or cannot happen on our, in our schools until, it's actually Executive Order 175 that would need to change. And that states that every student would need to be six feet apart from one another in order to safely have lunch in our buildings. So yes, we are waiting for state indoor dining regulations to loosen a little bit, but it would also have to come down to Executive Order 175. So these are some of the updates that I've been giving to schools' pandemic response teams this week and last week as they've come up with their plans again to incorporate snack time and how are we going to do elementary specials on premises. I'm trying to think of what other things they've been tackling, but all of our buildings are trying to come up with plans for, again, how do we, how do we get, get kids back in the buildings and do it in a safe way. I think that's where we are. Mr. Ranella, anything to add to that?
Just a quick reminder to anybody that may not have completed that survey and has a remote learner, that it does close this evening at midnight. So if you haven't yet completed that survey, we would appreciate it if you wouldn't go in and submit that for us.
Mr. Rosco, can you hear me?
Yes.
So in terms of phase six, are those still half-days or full-days? Because I know the dining is sort of an issue. It, what's the plan there in terms of?
Sure. So for phase six, our phase six is when we can safely bring all of our students back to campus for in-person instruction, five days a week. The full day schedule won't return until we can then safely do lunch on our campuses. So since we haven't seen any indication of when lunch can resume on campus, we don't know when full days. First, we're trying to get our students back every day, and then hopefully we can find a time when we can have them back for, for full days, like I said, once that lunch can resume.
Thank you.
Ms. Rosco, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so there was a mention of snack, and we mentioned it before. So now that the weather isn't great, will the elementary schools have tents? And will every single school have tents so that kids could possibly have snacks outside on rainy days?
Each elementary school is working, again, with their pandemic response team to come up with a way for their students to have snack during inclement weather days. For some of the buildings, it may be tents. For other buildings, they are working on some creative solutions for how to space students out inside where they could do a quick snack. So not every school will have a tent, but every school has been tasked with coming up with a way for those students to have snack now that we're experiencing colder and more inclement weather.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosco. Next, Mr. Carroll is going to give us the update on the winter athletic season from NJSI.
Thank you, Mr. Ranella. As we wind down the fall here, we have some guidance from the NJSI as far as the winter and the roadmap going forward. So the winter season practices will start on December third, with the regular season starting December twenty-first, running through February fifth. And then the winter postseason will start February fifth through the seventeenth. The season will consist of roughly fifteen games, depending on sport, and one scrimmage. Our middle schools will follow a similar timeline. We're working on those schedules as we speak. At this time, NJSI rules prohibit spectators to any indoor sport. That may change in the future, but as of right now, it's only essential personnel allowed at all the indoor venues. From there, we moved on to season three, which is gymnastics and volleyball, starting February sixteenth, running through the middle of April. And then the traditional spring season would start the end of April through the middle of May. So that's where we are now, and it's all subject to change. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carroll. We do have two voting items on the agenda this evening. The nursing plan is on the agenda and was uploaded for your review. And that's basically broken down as a, a school-by-school indicates the number of students, the number of nurses' visits for each school. Also breaks down the level of nursing care for students from levels one through four and indicates how many students for each level at each building. Just one thing to remember, obviously, we had an abbreviated school year last year, so the numbers are a little bit reduced from what we normally see as far as office visits are concerned, trainings are concerned, and some of the screenings. And the other item on the, the voting agenda is our memorandum of understanding with law enforcement. And that's just the, the agreement that's signed between the school district and local law enforcement. And that's just that we are going to cooperate with the law enforcement, and the law enforcement is going to cooperate with the school to ensure that we have a safe facility for our students and staff.
I have a, yes, I have a question. When it comes to the sports, the indoor sports for the kids, and the parents won't be able to come to watch them, any chance we go to televise it?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Ranella, I'm sorry. All of our indoor sports will be broadcast on the NFHS Network. We have cameras in place at this time, yes.
So how does that mean that the parents get to see this? I'm not exactly sure.
They, they go on the website, the NFHS Network, and there's a subscription fee, but that they pay for one time for the year, and they can see any game home or away that is broadcast on the NFHS Network. We've had it in place for a past couple of years.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Did we have, Mr. Carroll, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have cameras in both gyms at the high schools, correct? So a total of four cameras?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
No, thank you. We have no update tonight for shared services, so we'll move on to strategic planning. I don't know, Mrs. Doherty, if you wanted to speak on anything specific of strategic planning, or we have that rubric?
Well, the, the meeting that we had on the twenty-first, we did review a rubric that the administrative team had developed a draft of as a jump-off point, and the committee spent some time going over that and coming up with objectives to share with our consultant to guide the process of them developing enrollment planning scenarios. So, Mrs. Watt, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Yeah, we're still, I think we're still working on the rubric, and we shared it with Malone and McBroom, our photographer, so they know the key that we're, that we're looking to, oops.
Am I, um, no one heard that probably, sorry.
Yes.
We're working with Malone and McBroom to, to share the rubric and so that they know what is important when they're coming up with their scenarios for us. We actually spoke to them today about that.
Right, and the rubric did go out to the board last week too, so everybody could, could see it.
The rubric's gone to the full board. And also, there's the questions from the Navisyn community about the numbers to reflect Navisyn's decrease. And some individuals had asked about it at PIC, and then we never got back to them.
We did speak to Malone and McBroom about that. They did. And I believe we did share that in one of our other strategic planning committee meetings. They, they had, they had that factored in, but they took another look at it because they agreed that maybe the reductions were, or the drop-off in the enrollment was maybe something that they should adjust. So they took a look at it. They did, they did scale it back a little bit and made some adjustments to some of the other elementary. So we, we did, they did revise that in early October. I thought we had, we had shared that with the committee, so they, they did, they did take another look at that.
Okay, we just haven't seen the new numbers yet, but do we know when they're coming back to show new numbers?
We don't have a presentation set up for, for them right now. Right now, they're also working on the capacity of the buildings and had started to go over that. So I think at the point in time when we go over building capacities, you know, they could revisit their projections. And, you know, it's not big changes, but it's, you know, they did revise it a little bit. So I, I would think they should probably speak about both things at once. But we don't have that, we don't have that scheduled at this point right now. They were trying to finalize some of the building capacity information and then start planning the scenarios.
Great, okay. Hopefully for November.
There's, there's been a lot of overturning in Middletown, and I questioned them when they were at our meeting. I want to know what they're doing.
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's something that, you know, they were going to be gathering additional information on sales. I know that they've gone by historical and they've built in what they, you know, have felt was appropriate. You know, I would say one measure, you know, that we could use in the short term is, you know, whatever is being projected for the first period of time that they're projecting. You know, we could compare that to what the actual is, and we will know that, you know, by the end of this year, you know, what, what the enrollments are going to look like for next year, we can see, you know, where things stand.
I just don't see how we could go by historical because this is an unacceptable time that things have changed dramatically.
Well, it's not just historical. You know, they look at birth rates and they're looking, they are looking at, you know, they, they did look at the housing turnovers and so forth too. I understand what you're saying, that things are changing now too. But there's really no way for them to, you know, they can only go with the information they have to make a projection.
But what can they do about trying to get more accurate information?
I mean, again, the only thing that you could really do is monitor, like we did with the last enrollment projection. You know, after we got that, every year we would monitor what they projected and where we were. And it always turned out that we were, you know, we were pretty close. There might have been some changes, you know, between some of the schools, but, you know, as a district, you know, those numbers were always, you know, pretty much right there from what was projected.
Yeah, I, I get what, I get in the past, but this is not the same as the past. It's far different than the past.
Didn't the consultant go to city hall and talk to the planning board and find out how many units are going up over a certain period of time?
Yes, they have all the development. They have all the development information, and I think what Mrs. Minnies is talking about is existing stock, the turnover, and I get.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about development.
Right.
Talk about the overturning and the selling of the homes in Middletown. There's a huge turnover right now, and we don't know how.
We don't know how many people are moving into a house, how many kids. Our plans aren't going to be that accurate. And that's a big concern because normally that would not happen. With the pandemic, the sale of houses are, are, are on wildfire.
And the turnover.
And the turnover, we don't know actually how many kids were getting.
That's a big concern for your plan.
Well, again, I would think that, you know, if that's happening right now, we would be starting to see the effects, you know, fairly shortly. So again, it's something that the best, you know, all we can really do, or the best thing we can do is to monitor what our actual results are compared to what these projections are. And if it turns out that, you know, we see a trend that's significantly different than the projections, then yes, that would be definitely something we'd have to revisit.
Do I already have a question? We're eight months into the pandemic. We've all seen the for-sale signs coming and going around town to Mrs. Minnies' point. Do we have a readout on the increased enrollment in our schools from where we thought they would be in June to what the number actually was in September? And how many students we're adding on a weekly basis right now?
I, I can't give you exact numbers, but I do know our enrollments have been reduced. We've had students leave for private schools and for home instruction. So we, I, I do not believe we would show any increase at this point now. You know.
Don't we come out one time in October?
The October fifteenth snapshot, we can look at that, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would suggest, to, to address Mrs. Minnies' point, I would suggest that we use the information that we have on hand. Right, because the, the turnover in the township is definitely a real thing. There are people coming in, you know, they're leaving the city, they're leaving North Jersey in the more populated areas, and they're coming down here to Middletown. And so that should be reflected in enrollments as they move in. And that would not, that's not accounting for the new settlements, because those are not being filled in, these are the actual turnovers. So I would think that, you know, the best tea leaves that we possibly have are to look at our increasing or decreasing enrollment numbers over the next few months. We're not at the precipice of making any determinations on the redistricting right now. This is a long, long process, and so we should continue, you know, run data into this process and circle back with Malone and McBroom to reconcile what we know with what their models say. And that way, we can stay on top of it, because I, I think Mrs. Minnies makes an excellent point. As people come in with kids, they are going to be, you know, enrolling their kids in school, and we will be the first ones to know.
Can I just say something? Do you think that the census might help a little bit? Do you think that would help the numbers that we get from that?
No.
Well, do we, no, we missed it?
Well, I, I just think that the, you know, that would be a question for Malone and McBroom, but I would assume in the census here, they take that into account along with all of the other data points. I recall them mentioning census data as one of their data points. So I don't know that we're going to learn anything new.
Well, it's going on right now, that's right. Okay, I just thought maybe that might help it a little bit. Okay.
Didn't they stop the count at the end of?
The count has already been stopped.
Yeah.
So let's see if we can have Malone and McBroom come in November to give us the capacity update and to answer some of these questions for us.
Can we also get a copy of the October fifteenth enrollment? I know I asked for it, but I haven't seen it.
We actually, we could have any, but we're seeing the package. So it's in the board portal for everyone.
Mrs. Rogers, I just want to remind you that we were planning also on having Malone and McBroom come in December, you know, to do a presentation. I'm not sure, you know, if we want to. I mean, I guess we can discuss whether it makes sense to have them come two months in a row, or whether.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it doesn't bother us to have them come in November. Just explain the process of what they're going through, because I'm sensing an unrest in the community. Anytime we mention that numbers are down at a school, people are concerned we're going to close that school, when it could just mean that they're going to take students from another overcrowded school to their school, you know. This isn't being talked about closing the school, but I know that people do get uncomfortable and concerned. So if we could just have them come in in November, talk us through their process, what they're going through in preparation for December, that might be helpful for the community. I don't know if anybody else has any other opinions on that?
They can come in November and December, I guess, right?
I think it'd be great.
Okay. Let's see. So now we've got personnel, which we discussed in executive session. And so then we move on to our public comment on agenda items only. So this is for anything that's on the agenda this evening. Just a reminder that we do have a thirty-minute limit, and we have about ninety-six participants this evening. So we're going to limit it to three minutes each so that as many people as possible can speak during that thirty minutes. Please, if you don't hear from us at the end of your comment, it's not because we're not interested in what you have to say. We just, it may not be able to answer your comment. And this is basically to get your comment on the record. And this is basically to get your comment on the record. It's not a question answer or a town hall.
Okay. For those who may not be familiar with the process, on the bottom of your screen is an icon. It looks like a hand, we'll say raise hand, click that. That'll indicate that you'd like to ask a question. We do have a hand raised. It is Joanne Fanslow. We'll bring her in now.
Hi. Um, I have a question. Uh, my son has IEP and he hasn't had speech for two months already. And I talked to Danielle Shrek and the speech teacher from the inner hall grade school. He's in, um, he's in third grade now. Um, and she just said she's trying to interview speech teachers and she got nothing yet. And I, I pressed virtual for the whole year by accident. And I think he, he's getting a little frustrated now and I, I have to wait until the 16th now. But he's really getting frustrated with the one-class science and everything like that of, uh, of coming to school.
Okay, thank you. I just want to direct that caller to the principal of her school to discuss this on a one-on-one, one-on-one basis.
Okay, next, we don't have a last name, so we'll bring in Mike.
Yes, can you tell me what the law enforcement agreement is and what it, what it has to do with?
Hey, Mike, would you mind just providing your last name for the record, please?
Craig, Mike Craig.
Thank you.
Can you tell me what the law enforcement agreement is and why it's necessary?
Yeah, Mr. Craig, that's, that's a state mandate from the New Jersey, New Jersey Department of Ed. It, it requires a cooperation between the local police department and the prosecutor's office and the school district. And it, the actual memorandum of agreement is issued by the state. The town has the authority to make changes to it, to add to it. It cannot take away anything from the memorandum issued by the state. But essentially there's verbiage in there that requires certain offenses to automatically be reported by the school to the local police department and vice versa. If the police department has information that may have an effect on the school district, they have a requirement to report that to the local school district as well.
Okay, I'm seeing Joanne Fanslow's hand has gone back up. So we'll come back in one last time.
So I talked to the principal and Danielle Shrek. You guys are the board of ed, aren't you gonna like look into it for me more since you guys are still contracting the speech? People though, I mean, we're, he's a specialist, he has IEP.
Uh, yes, you know what, we're, we will have Dr. Tiedemann. She is in charge of special ed. You know, if you can call her office or she can try to look up your number and give you a call tomorrow to discuss.
All right, because I, yeah, I mean, uh, like this is two months already without speech and stuff like that. Because they said they're spreading the speech seats are thin. Uh, my number is, yeah, I mean, she-
Don't give it out here, don't give it out, don't give your number out here. We'll figure it out. We'll look up in the system, okay?
Yeah.
Someone will call you tomorrow, okay, from the special ed department, all right?
All right, thank you. Cause I don't want to call the state. Like I called the state on Garfield because they were trying to get speech from kindergarten. I don't want to like, you know, have to call, I called the special ed state to, to try to fight for speech and everything. I mean, I don't, I don't want to go to you guys. I moved from Garfield down here because like you guys are rated better than Garfield there. So, I mean, I just like, I'm just a little aggravated like with the, the speech and everything.
We understand, we hear that, we hear that. So we'll, we'll try to work that out for you, okay?
Okay, next is Catherine M. Farley.
Hi, thanks very much. Um, I just had, I guess, one quick comment. I know earlier it was mentioned with the phases in the reopening about lunch and that executive order 175 would have to be revised in order for the students to eat lunch. Um, I guess I would just ask, I know you can't answer questions now, but just for maybe additional clarity for the community. Because looking at the executive order, you know, it kind of sets forth all the mandates about school and the six-foot requirement says, you know, as it does for everything, like what's being shown in a lot of classrooms right now because we just can't get to six feet. Uh, it says we're practicable and it says if that's not practicable, then, you know, you can use dividers. And I know a lot of other districts are doing that and able to feed their children lunch. In that way, they have the dividers at their desks and, you know, they can eat lunch. So I guess I'm just confused where that absolute mandate of six feet that was discussed earlier is coming from because I just didn't see it in executive order 175. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Rogers, I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Chris. So moving on, I need a motion to approve the minutes from executive session on September 23rd and the regular voting meeting also on September 23rd.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions. For the report of the president tonight, this is the time of year where we go over the code of ethics for school board members. Ginny has sent these to you all to sign. So if you haven't signed them and get them over to Jimmy, please do so this evening. I'll read it for us. Whereas the New Jersey Legislature adopted amendments in 2002 to the School Ethics Act to make adherence to the Code of Ethics for School Board Members mandatory for each board member and to ensure that board members understand what is expected of them under the Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. Each board member must read and become familiar with the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. Each member must sign an acknowledgement that he or she has received a copy of the code. Therefore, each Board of Education shall discuss the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for School Board Members at a regularly scheduled public meeting annually, adopt policies and procedures regarding the training of members in understanding the Code of Ethics and provide documentation that each member has received and reviewed it. So this is what we are doing today. Every month at our meetings, we do have the Code of Ethics for the public on the second page of the agenda. All right, moving on to B. I need a motion to approve B one through four.
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need a motion to approve. I'm sorry, Mariella, did you have an update, a superintendent update? Go ahead, sorry.
First, I'd just like to congratulate our students who were recognized for being named National Commended Scholars and for our AP Scholars and also congratulations to our staff members who have earned a doctorate. I also want to thank our High School North and High School South speakers for, you know, updating us on the great things that are going on in the school and the accomplishments of our students. Mrs. Orozco, you know, a little while ago, just spoke about the re-entry plan that we're in and we are excited that we were able to move to phase four just recently. Added additional students are, are students that need the most support back into school in person each day. That was a great accomplishment, I think. And I think we have to thank our staff and our students and our parents for following all the protocols and helping us to get to that phase. We're hopeful that we're going to get to phase five on November 16th as anticipated. And as Mrs. Orozco said, that's when our students who are participating fully virtually now have an opportunity to come in. And I know there was a reminder put out by Mrs. Orozco and Mr. Renella, but I also want to remind our parents of the students that are participating virtually to go in and fill out that survey if you haven't done so yet. That's important for our building administrators and our teachers to be able to plan for students who are coming back. So if you haven't done so, do so. It closes tonight. Our final phase six is anticipated on December 14th and that is when all students will have the opportunity to attend school each school day. The cohort model will end. I was recently asked why we wait one month or about a month between our phases. And that timeframe, which is 28 days at least, provides a big enough window for us to monitor the health data and understand the impact of adding more students in person in each phase. It's basically two 14-day cycles. And when we talk to the epidemiologist, that was important to, to wait those two 14-day cycles to see and, and get a real read on what was going on. This approach has been successful for us and we've only had to temporarily pivot to virtual instructions in two schools. And although this is really a positive data point, especially when, when like other schools haven't even opened fully or they've had to close temporarily for 14 days, I don't want to minimize the impact that having to close two of our buildings had on our parents and our students in the communities that were affected. That is, you know, something we didn't want to do and that is not the direction we wanted to go in. So, but we're hopeful that we can keep moving forward and hit phase five on November 16th. I also wanted to just say that Friday night, High School South is going to host the North-South football game. At, you know, it'll be at High School South. I just wanted to remind everybody about the spectator policy that is in place because it's NJ SIAA rules. Only 500 spectators are permitted. Um, and so the tickets for this event, as they have been going for the previous football games, go to the parents of the players, the band, the cheerleaders, the color guard, and then the remainder go to the students. The same will be in effect for our Thanksgiving Day game. That also will be limited to 500. So again, only the parents of the bands, cheerleaders, color guard and players will have the tickets along with students. There are no ticket sales for either one of those events. But the games will be televised. The October 30th game this Friday is going to be on NJ.com and the NFS HS station that Mr. Carroll spoke about earlier. It is a subscription, but it's a one-time for the whole year subscription. Um, and then information on broadcasting of the Thanksgiving game will, you know, be on the website as we get closer to that game. And lastly, I just wanted to remind everyone that next Tuesday is Election Day and it's a fully virtual day for all our students as mandated by governor's order. So just remember that next Tuesday. And to see, you know, what cohort goes what day, especially when we have a day that's fully virtual, just go to our school calendar on the website. It has been updated and color-coded so you can tell whether you're on a cohort A or cohort B day. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. So now I need a motion to approve C two through six, please.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mrs. Rogers, we need to approve the items. Oh, I'm sorry, it is number, it is letter C, never mind. I thought, I, my mistake, never mind, you're good.
Okay.
C two through six.
C two through six, please. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I approve on number two.
Okay. And abstentions. Okay. Number 13A, technology. Did we have nothing on the addendum? No. Okay, moving on to B. One. Through four.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. For facilities, I don't see anything. Nope, nothing on the addendum, okay. For policy, we have the second reading, adoption, the administration of medication. So I need a motion to approve 1A.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. And I think probably should have said it before, but I didn't see you do that. Are we looking under policy, are we looking to change our randomization policy?
Mrs. Minewes, we did that earlier in the year prior to the school year starting. We still do, we're, we, we've suspended the actual testing. The policy stays the same. We just suspended the testing right now while we're in COVID for a, a few reasons. One is that the nurses are really busy right now and to, to test, it takes a lot of time. But also it's an, it's a oral swab. So to have them have to do an oral swab in someone's mouth right now puts them at a little bit higher risk. So while the pandemic is in place, we're going, we're suspending the, the actual testing, but we still are requiring students to sign up so that as soon as this is over, they'll already be in the pool and we can still test at that point, okay?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion to approve E one and two on the regular agenda and then E one A on the addendum.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. I need a motion to approve F one through four. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry? No, on one. Okay, I'm sorry, I think, all in favor?
Aye.
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 On one and abstention. Okay. For student activities. We have nothing, right? And then personnel, we've got on the addendum. I one. Through.
Mrs. Rogers, before we do the vote on this, I just want to note that we are administratively withdrawing number 4J.
4J.
On the personnel report.
Okay, so all but 4J of I one through 20.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions. Okay, now we're moving on to old business.
I, I have some, and it's actually a question from Ms. Gallagher. At the last meeting, I did a note. I have a question from Ms. Gallagher. At the last meeting, I asked about the port facility and the closing of the building and the prevention of vaccines. That's not heard of. So I did my own research and I got the letters out with thanks to the board. And he said, and we are about to state how the smooth closing of the facility, not the program, not the educational program, but the facility itself. So now I would like to know is why the district was advised that they would be able to open it for, for, um, for YMCAs?
Mrs. Minewes, unless we, I believe, like, one meeting of the cabinet meeting, if they have been, I believe, my response was, oh, it should be reviewed by the patient. I will, I would ask you.
I think, I thought what you told me, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought what you told me was that you was what things were. And if, if you had an answer, you would give us the immediate close question. If it was necessary or if you let them know that less just needed.
Be good.
But Mrs. Minewes, if I did say that, I apologize for not giving back to you. However, you, you could have called me or emailed me as you frequently do. But again, that's no excuse. If I didn't get back to you, my- But again, that's no excuse. If I didn't get back to you, my apologies.
But I just wanted on the record, this basically set the entire board on a letter.
I haven't seen that letter, so I'll be happy to look at it.
Says that the facility is closed.
I'll be happy.
We need to reopen it. It has to be a, a requirement. We probably have to go through the state to get permission to reopen it.
I'll be happy to look at the letter again.
Just wanted to put the rumor out there that, you know, people were trying to use the building or the district to go into, but if you read this letter, it says that we can't. It's officially closed by the state, the facility, not the program, the facility itself.
So yeah, I'll be happy to look at the letter. I haven't seen the letter you're referring to. You haven't referenced the date or who it was sent to or from. But again, I'll be happy to look at it.
And just for the record, I don't believe that any of the other board members have seen this letter either, right? I have not.
I haven't received any letter.
I got it. I got it in my board package and it stated May 26th.
What year?
And it went to Dr. George.
Last year.
What year?
2000.
2000.
2000? That's 20 years ago.
No, 2020.
Okay, well, again.
It was right after, it was right after the district sent the disclosure into the state and this is the state's request. Everybody got it. It's in my package.
Well, just because it came in your package doesn't mean everybody got it. But again, I'll be happy to look at it, John.
Well, I'm sure Dr. George, but we're going to need some of them alone.
Well, again, we don't, no one here. Does anybody, does any board member recall receiving that letter?
I do know, but I will look through my emails again.
Perhaps if you can forward that letter to the superintendent and it can be sent to all board members, I'm as well as myself, I'll look at it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Old business? Mike?
When you wanted to be such a long report.
Yes. Personnel?
Right, under personnel. Did you cover both of these sections of personnel? Because in here you have 1 through 20. And then on the other one, you have 1 through something, someone to.
And then 4J would be missing. Oh, God, you're right. You're right, Mike.
And then lastly, on the student recognition, we took that timeout to recognize two groups, but we didn't recognize the class of 2020. Was there a reason for that?
No, which recognition was that?
When we, when, at the beginning of the meeting, when we did the board recognition, we read the student recognition for the three students on top. And then we talked about the AP exams and the AP scholars. But there's another section here on the class of 2020.
Um, I think the reason for that is we invited the students from the, that are currently in the school. So that's why we read their names. But everybody goes into the booklet. The graduates would go into the booklet, but they weren't available for us to send like our email invitations to come. Okay? And we're trying to do virtually what we used to do in person. So sometimes it gets a little lost in the translation.
And I, and I just want to clarify, when we did do items 1 through 20 and personnel, the initial personnel report, I believe, is 1 through 18, but you said 1 through 20 and, and that just incorporates the addendum. The addendum is just in addition to the items that were on there. But when you said items, the 1 through 20, that would incorporate the addendum. So I believe it's fine.
Okay, okay. I'm happy to do it again if we have to.
No, I think we're fine.
Okay. All right. So that brings us to new business.
I, I think I would like to bring up something for all our schools to look into. The Middletown Library sends all our school information on programs that are taking place there and things for our kids to do and they're looking to donate books to our schools. I would like to see a lot of this information go out because what a lot of parents are saying is not on the backpack and they're not access, they don't have access to that. Is there a way that we can
I can, I can tell you that anything they've sent us, we've put in the backpacks of Mr. Portolo. They are. We've only, I think it was only one that we got from them and we did put that in. It was activities. It didn't say anything about books. I read it. But it did say, listed all the activities and it went into all the backpacks.
What about the kids who are all virtual? Can they access that on our website? Would it be on our website?
Yeah, so the backpack is, you go through your school's website and there's a virtual.
Right. Okay, virtual backpack. Got it. Thank you.
At least just follow us a bit, please.
Virtual backpack.
Because at this time of
Absolutely.
Looking for many things for our kids to do. And it would be great programs for them to get involved in.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? New business? All right, we're going to open it up to public comment. Remember, we do have a limit of 30 minutes and it looks like we have 78 participants. So we are going to make it three minutes each. And remember that we may not respond to you this evening. This is for you to get your comment on the record. It's not a back and forth. It's not a town hall.
Okay, first we will bring in Irina.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for taking my comment and my questions. Although I do understand it's not a town hall forum, I would still like to be on the record. My questions pertain to some of the discussion surrounding equity and inclusion. Mr. Renella, Mrs. Picas and the job description of the Equity and Inclusion Specialist that the district is seeking to hire all use terms referencing social justice and elaborating on global citizenship. And I think that most academic sources define this agenda as a part of being a global citizen includes striving for social justice, meaning justice in terms of the distribution of wealth, opportunities and privileges within our society. With this in mind, the Global Citizen Initiatives highlight courses that focus on social justice. So I'd like to know what does this mean for potential changes to our district's curriculum? Are there any current changes being made that incorporate frameworks centered around critical race theory, for example, or the propaganda promoted by the 1619 Project, for example, into the curriculum? Since these frameworks heavily support all of the aforementioned goals that have been discussed during the meeting. If so, will parents have the option to opt their child out of these divisive and poisonous teachings that inadvertently only promote and even create racism? No matter how well-intentioned they may appear. I just want to be clear and pardon me if I'm, you know, jumping around a little bit. I wasn't expecting to make this comment. It's off the cuff because I wasn't expecting, I didn't know what you guys were going to say. So now that, that you've brought it up, I, I just want to be clear that I am very passionate about civil rights. I fully understand the importance of promoting a fair, safe, healthy and equitable environment for all of our students. I do. I want them to be free of social intimidation at school and I certainly want them to be free of any systemic injustice at school or in any institution. I hold a master's degree in law with a focus on civil rights. And I'm also the parent of one of the few black students in our district. I say this only to express that I am not coming from a place of ignorance. However, I do hold a dissenting opinion about the efficacy of the programs that I mentioned and about incorporating them into the public school curriculum. As a human and as a mother, I assure you that I share in your desire for the best environment and outcome for every single one of our students, no matter what walk of life they come from, no matter their race, their gender, their learning abilities. I'm on board, but I know I'm not alone in contending that we are on the wrong track in achieving those outcomes if we implement the aforementioned programs. And that's my concern because I see that that's where we, we're going. And I know I'm not alone in contending that we're on the wrong track and that the district is going to meet a lot of opposition if these changes to the curriculum are made. So just to circle back.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Suzanne Tardy.
Hi, thank you for taking my question. First, I want to thank Mrs. Walker and other members, board members who showed their support of the North and South community by reinstating the Thanksgiving game this year. So I want to thank you for doing that. That being said, I wanted to know if for this game this Friday night, if South will be reinstated their home tickets and the tickets will be distributed the way they normally would if it was any other opponent?
I, I can just answer that quickly. The majority of the tickets are for the South parents and, and stu, and you know, students. But it's not an exact 400, 100 as we had been doing. And that is because it is a North-South game, like the entire town, but South does have the, the, the biggest share of those tickets. It's not split 25, to, you know, 250 each. Okay?
Okay, next is Kelly Broden.
Hi, thank you for taking me, my, my comment. I just wanted to piggyback off of what Ms. Menus just mentioned about the library. The library sends a lot of information to the schools, the, the monthly calendar, various flyers about programs that are going on in children's department. They have a lot of great virtual things going on right now for students. I did do a check of the school websites today and the only virtual backpack that had any current information from the library was Middletown Village Elementary School. No other school had any information from the library. So I just wanted to make you aware of that and that information is sent over regularly to the administration to distribute to the schools in the district. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Jen Brown.
Hi, guys. Thanks for taking my call. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My question is to piggyback Suzanne Tardy's question actually on the ticket distribution to Mary Ellen Walker. You had said that it's going to be distributed. How exactly will that be for Middletown South? Being that it's not 250, 250, how many exactly will South be getting for Friday night's game?
I don't know the exact number, but it is very close to the 400 number that you should be getting. There might be 20, 25 tickets less, something like that in order for the, for the players at, at North to have their parents come, seniors get two and underclassmen get one ticket. And I think that's all that went to North. I don't know if Mr. Carroll's still on, if he could.
Sure, I can chime in. Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, basically every participant at South will get two tickets like they have all along. And there, there's a few more North because we did have a student raffle and things like that. So there will be some North students there, but it, it's as close to the 400, 100 as can be. I, I don't know the exact number, 375, 380, somewhere in that range.
Mrs. Rogers, I'm not seeing any more hands raised at this time.
Okay, seeing no more hand raised, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting, please. Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Have a good night, everyone.